Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Hit the thing.
Thank you. Welcome to the April 6, 2015 city council meeting. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll?
Certainly. Madam Chair Beidler?
Here.
Alderman Waldeck?
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Here.
Alderman Moore?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Adelman?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Alderman Tappus absent. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I hope you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda tonight is the report of city officers. And as acting mayor tonight, I have a real treat in store. I am a big fan, as I know most of us are, of the Deerpath Art League and Gallery. And tonight, we are going to be seeing and meeting some emerging artists who have received awards. And this is really a kind of a big deal and very exciting. And I remember actually being here last year when this, at this time when students got the awards. We're going to actually get to see their artwork, I believe, tonight. Is that correct? So that's, that's very exciting. So this is a, this is a real, a real treat and a wonderful, a wonderful opportunity for all of us. I'd like to introduce Jillian Chapman, who is the gallery director and is going to, is going to get this, get this rolling.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We are so honored and blessed that the schools of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff have participated these past years in our Emerging Artist Show. A couple of things I want to talk to you about tonight is that the Deerpath Art League is a nonprofit organization that has been in our community for over 61 years. We run the art fair in the square, we host classes, and we have a gallery space located on the second floor of the Gorton Community Center, which you can see here are some pictures of our current exhibition, which we're very excited about. Our mission, the Deerpath Art League strives to spark, nurture, and enhance creativity as well as raise awareness and appreciation of the arts in the community. And part of that is us giving back to the community and honoring the children that are the up-and-coming artists for our schools and for our community. Our spring classes start next week, so if you're interested in painting, watercolor, we also have drawing classes, new photography class, and they all start next week. If you're interested, just check out our website. We also just started a new class, which is called Palette and Pores, which is this coming Thursday from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. It's a one-time class that is a, you do it, the teacher paints a sample, and everyone paints the same painting, which is pretty amazing, and you leave by the end of the class with a painting in hand. So if you're interested in learning how to paint or just spending an evening with some wine and appetizers, it's a really fun event. I wanted to show you a picture of our postcard, which Emily Conklin is displayed. She's from Lake Forest Academy, which we just love her work. It's a four-piece mountainscape with a sun behind it, which is just beautiful. And then here is another view of the gallery, as well as a photo from our opening, March 6. Part of the Emerging Artist Show is to honor Youth Art Month. So the next slide is the first award winner. So for starting with the schools, Carolyn Stock from Cherokee Elementary. Here you go, Madam Chairman. From Deerpath Middle School. At the end of all of the awards being mentioned, if all the kids could stay up here, we're going to do a group photo at the end. From Deerpath Middle School, we have Bennett Dunning. Also, from Deerpath Middle School, we have a group project that won for the 5th and 6th grade. It's Katie Hollander, Camillee Harling, and Sarah Rollins. For Deerpath Middle School 2D, Mark Winwick. For Deerpath Middle School, for 3D, Patrick Corrigan. For Deerpath Middle School APT Art Fair is Annie Palmbeck for 2D. Deerpath Middle School APT Art Fair for 3D is Ansley Weisner. The winner for Everett School is Charlie Sundberg. For Kinder Haven Preschool, William Bestow. For Lake Bluff Elementary School in 2D, Winston Monta, sorry, Monta Telbo. For Lake Bluff Elementary School in 3D is Finley Condonlin. Lake Bluff Middle School in 3D is Robert Hammond. Lake Bluff Middle School in 2D is Renee Hong. Lake Forest Academy in 3D is Sophie Emery. For Lake Forest Academy in 2D is Emily Conklin. Emily, if you would just hold on a second. I also want to give you the poster with your art. For Lake Forest Country Day is Nate Waldenberg.
How many more do we have? We're running out of space.
Let's see, one, two, three, four, five.
Okay, I'll tell you what. We're going to do two lines, all right? Why don't you come forward and then you guys move in. And then you guys can pull around back.
For Lake Forest High School in 3D is Erica Alfaro. For Lake Forest High School in 2D is Margot Miller. For Sheridan School Elementary is Grace Taylor. For Woodlands Academy is, for 2D, is Jessica Yang. And lastly, Woodlands in 3D is Emily Mullins.
All right, give us 30 seconds, and then it's all the pictures that you want. We're going to ask the council to stand up, please, behind us. And I ask you just to push back just a little, all right? So we can get everybody in the picture. Look back a little further. You know, if you go on the other side and behind there.
If any of these pieces are for sale, my email's on the city's website. My kids don't encourage your kids to be artists. They're musicals.
Same thing.
But they never did this kind of stuff. I mean, they did for art class, but not.
An actor and a painter.
Oh, really?
Oh, you're screwed.
At least two.
She's watched her brother.
My oldest is a musician. He's doing gigs in New York City and going to Bard.
He has managed to scratch unless living together.
At one point in his life as well. Because actually, when you think about it, the work that Lake Forest Open Lands does is really creating a wonderful picture for all of us to live and experience every day. And this evening, we're, we're fortunate to have John Centel, who is the president of Lake Forest Open Lands, here to talk about what's going on in Open Lands. And the timing is perfect because it's now over 45 degrees, and I think I saw a bud on a tree the other day. And so things are starting to green up. So, John?
Thank you, Bob, for the introduction. I'm not sure I could actually paint my house very well, but that's. Good evening, Madam Chairman, and members of the city council, and those listening tonight. It is my privilege to serve as president of Lake Forest Open Lands Association. And we do appreciate the invitation to share with our community a little, a little bit about what's going on at Open Lands right now, especially for those listening tonight who are choosing to watch on cable as a warm-up to the championship game. The eastern bluebird that you see up on the screen there is a photo that was just taken at our preserves. And that's, seeing our feathered friends again is a great sign, because that is the sure sign, when they're back in town nesting, that means spring is on its way. And the transition from winter to spring is an ideal time for everyone in our community to get outside and see the renewal of nature on our many miles of nature trails that are open to the public, and also to take advantage of the many activities happening at Lake Forest Open Lands in the next month or two. There's always something happening at Lake Forest Open Lands to encourage you to connect with nature. I certainly hope that most people who are listening are aware of Lake Forest Open Lands and our mission to help preserve our natural heritage. We're proud to serve as our community's grassroots conservation organization. And people have heard me say in the past that if I could define our community in just one word, I'd call us grounded. And that description might raise a few eyebrows, but especially from those who live outside Lake Forest. But if you live here, I think you understand what I mean. Because one of the truly special things about our community is our connection to nature and the beauty of our open spaces. And one of the key reasons we've been able to save so much open space over the years is the very strong public-private partnership with our city and with our many residents. And while Open Lands has been preserving land for about 48 years now, I always like to remind people that Lake Forest Open Lands is really your conservation organization, and it's your land to share and enjoy. And every dollar that we raise goes right back into saving and restoring the land we love right in our community and educating our kids right in our community. So I think that says a lot about the value that our community places on our connection to nature. And it does say, I think, that we're a little bit grounded. Conservationist John Muir once said that "in every walk in nature, one receives far more than he seeks." And I think that's the way many people who have a membership to Lake Forest Open Lands feel. We're proud that one in five households of our community are an annual member of Lake Forest Open Lands. And it's this support that actually makes all the work we do possible. You may have seen this new annual membership mailer in your mailbox recently. And I'd like to encourage everyone to consider all the benefits of becoming a member. 800 acres for you, 12 miles of, of nature trails and more on the way, 3,500 children educated each year, camps and school programs, and our close working partnership with our city to re-green our community, and member discounts for all our events and programs. I'd like to think that that's one of the best returns you'd get on a $65 investment. Our environmental education programs are based out of our conservation campus at, in the restored armored gatehouse at Melody Farm Nature Preserve. For those not familiar, Melody Farm Nature Preserve is at the corner of Deerpath and Waukegan. And some residents may have noticed the very large and dramatic clear tree clearing activities and restoration project we have going on at Waukegan right now. Currently, we're removing literally hundreds of diseased ash and elm trees and invasive buckthorn from about two acres in the corner, as well as south of that on Waukegan Road. And we are not immune to the same problems that residents are having, the city's having, in battling these invasive pests. But there is good news in all this. We're in the process of turning lemons into lemonade, because after this clearing, we're engaging in a very substantial native planting initiative to enhance the beauty of our campus and our community. Of course, we're going to unveil the, the oaks that have been trying to be seen for years back and exist on the site, but in May, we'll be plundering literally hundreds and hundreds of native trees, conifers, and understory shrubs to make this site a beautiful restored native woodland. So here you see a picture of, it's, it's not quite, it was before the project's done. This is a long, a long meadow before the project. Here it is after. You can see to the left-hand side there, a lot of the trees are gone, except for a few of the natives. Here's a before and after on Waukegan Road. This is more dramatic. And here's after the restoration, not after the restoration, but after the clearing. And so one of the hidden gems, really, of this program is that we've opened up the dramatic western view of the prairie for all to see off Waukegan Road. And so many have contributed to this project, and we thank you. And we especially want to thank the Lake Forest Garden Club for their support in this project effort. So in closing, here's an artist's rendering of the final product. So thank you for pardoning our sawdust over the next month, and we should have it replanted and grown shortly. Much of the restoration work we accomplished throughout our town is through coordinated volunteer efforts. We love our volunteers at Lake Forest Open Lands, and they are really the lifeblood of much that we do. And there are opportunities for everyone of any age or any skill level to learn and make a difference by working with Lake Forest Open Lands. Here's a couple of our bluebird monitors working in the field. And right now, we're looking for a few specialized volunteers who'd be interested in being frog monitors or butterfly monitors or even helping with our prescribed burns on our preserves. We'll provide all the training, so please call Katie at the office if you're interested. And I also want to call your attention to several days in March, or I'm sorry, in May, where you can get involved in helping to restore our native habitats in our community. It's really a fun way to learn and to get outside and to make some friends, and it really makes a difference in our community. So here's three dates up on the screen. I hope you'll make a note of it, and help to restore our native landscapes. Managing the lands in our community is a big, full-time job for our team of trained restoration ecologists. So if you smell smoke in the air this spring, it very well may be our full-time land crew conducting controlled burns on the prairie. Burning is critical land activity we do annually to keep the invasive species out of our prairie. And even though Open Lands has a full-time team and a crew of interns, we still welcome help from the community to get the job done. So just give us a call. There are other outdoor activities going on in May we'd like people to know about, and I encourage you to go on our website to learn more. As you know, environmental education is a big part of our mission at Open Lands, and we're hosting a wonderful annual spring event we hope families will take advantage of called the Play Out. And it's a free event and invites all parents to spend some time outdoors with their school-aged children by playing outside in nature. At the event, we'll provide all kinds of activities, organized activities that promote exploration of the natural world, like tree climbing and playing in the mud. The parents love that one, and making art in nature. There's something really for everyone, so our Play Out is geared for kids up to middle school age. And the best news is it's free, rain or shine, we'll hold that event. I'd also like to invite everyone in our community to our annual meeting to be held on Wednesday, May 13, at 300 North Green Bay Road. All members of our community are encouraged to attend, and will share in our conservation success and hear about future endeavors of Lake Forest Open Lands. And Open Lands Associate Board is hosting a fun and festive way to enjoy our Melody Farm Nature Preserve on a spring evening with its Cat Tales and Cocktails event on May 15. There's live music, a bourbon tasting provided by Jim Beam, and a special sneak preview and pre-sale opportunity for our largest native trees for the tree sale. So this event was a lot of fun last year, and proceeds go to support our education programming in the community. And of course, the next day, in partnership with the city of Lake Forest, we'll be hosting our Native Tree and Plant Sale at Melody. As part of this morning, we will be hosting several expert speakers who will talk about native plants and butterflies and the importance of pollinators in our community. And John Mariani will be there to offer his expertise on native plant selection. So I encourage you all to go online and preorder your trees. They're starting to go fast, and buying your trees at our plant sale is not only a great value, but it's also a great way to help re-green our community for the future. And in July, we encourage you, we'll be turning Melody Farm Nature Preserve into our own outdoor amphitheater with the Citadel Theater presenting Shakespeare outdoors. And what a great way to get a blanket and sit under the stars and enjoy some entertainment in your own backyard. And finally, September's not all that far away, and it means the lighting of the bonfire. Bagpipes and Bonfire is an event like no other in Chicago, and it's one of the great Lake Forest traditions. So we hope folks will mark their calendars now for September 27 and join us out at Middle Fork Savannah. So as you can see, there's a lot going on and a lot for you to experience at Open Lands in the coming months. And I thank you for the opportunity to promote that and to speak with you tonight. And I certainly hope to see you all down the trail this spring. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob, anything else?
Thank you, John. Are there any questions that anybody has of John?
I had one. I really enjoy Open Lands, and thank you for leading, leading us down the trail.
Thank you.
One of the questions that keeps popping into my head every time I hear someone jogging and being assaulted or having a, a security issue, mostly from other humans. I don't hear too much about animal attacks, but I worry about that in Lake Forest. And I don't know if you've had anyone make reports of things on the trail that, that shouldn't be happening, or people who are not out for a good walk, but perhaps in some other activity. Any concerns, or how do you, how do you, how do you prepare for something that might be happening that shouldn't be?
Well, we don't, you know, we don't have security monitoring our preserves, but we have a lot of people in the preserves, and we have a very close, you know, relationship and contact with the police department. Fortunately, we have heard of no, you know, incidents in that regard. I mean, on occasion, you have a dog incident, and we handle them quite, quite quickly. You know, having your dog in the preserve is a privilege, not a right, so we make sure to monitor that closely. On occasion, over time, we've had little bits of vandalism in our preserves. And, you know, sort of just remarkably, we normally find out what occurs, and we teach the pope people who did it, usually young people, saying, hey, why don't you go out and see what this place is? And it ends up being a lesson learned and that sort of thing. But fortunately, we have not had any incidents, and we hope to keep it that way. Our, our preserves are open from dusk to dawn, and I think that's part of the reason probably why it's a safe place to go.
Thank you.
John? I happen to know the website by heart, but a lot of people probably don't. So Susan, is there a link on our city website that goes directly to?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
I have a question, wondering if you could comment tonight on the different plans that Fort Sheridan has put forward and how Open Lands feels about the different proposals that are.
Well, thanks for asking. So on just Wednesday, the Lake County Forest Preserve District will be having an open house from 5 to 7 in Fort Sheridan to talk about the plans. We sent out an email to residents today to talk about our opinion. There are two plans on the table right now. So by analyzing both of those plans, Lake Forest Open Lands strongly endorses Plan A. We think Plan A, and there's many reasons why we endorse Plan A, but we think first of all that it will keep Fort Sheridan as a, as a very special nature preserve as it was intended. We think it reduces some of the burden on the city of Lake Forest for police and fire. We think it's an efficient use of resources by the county in that it limits infrastructure. It also promotes Fort Sheridan as a native woodland, which is really what that area was 45 years ago, and why we all care a great deal about grassland birds, and we're very interested in seeing those restored. There's also limited spaces for woodland birds on our lakeshore, and there's not much. There's also limited spaces for woodland birds on our lakeshore, and there's not much public lakeshore available for that. So, we think Fort Sheridan is one of the real gems of Lake Forest, one of the real gems of our county, and I think it's a very special place, and it's a lakeshore preserve. It's not a lakeshore beachfront. And I think we want to be very careful to tread lightly on it and treat it that way. And so, we support Plan A, and if another plan was proposed, we'd certainly consider that. But right now, we encourage everyone to go and listen to the open house and to contact either Ty Kovac, Executive Director, or Ann Main, Chairman of the Forest Preserve District, or go on their website, because they really are listening to residents. And there's a very loud contingent of folks who have one opinion, and we want to make sure all opinions are heard. So, you know, if you have any further questions, we'd be happy to talk with you about it.
So it's an open house on Wednesday?
An open house at Fort Sheridan Wednesday, where they'll be explaining, answering your questions, they'll have the plans up there, they're going to be listening to comments, but they really are listening to comments written in letters and online to sort of make this decision. I think it's a big thing to think about, because it will impact how Fort Sheridan is used going forward for the next, you know, 30 years.
Susan, do we have information about the open house on our website?
Yes, it is on our events calendar.
On the events calendar, on the city's website, on the events calendar. I remember seeing it on my email, and I can't remember whence it came, so that's a good thing for us to know.
I think it's called the Young Artist Center. I don't know the exact address of the building, but it's the Young Artist Center.
I had a question. I can't be there at 5:00, but I know it runs from 5:00 to 7:00. I mean, does it, you, it starts there and you...
It's my understanding, it's an open house, so I think if you pop and ask questions...
That's what I, that's, okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, you can pop in, pop out kind of thing.
My understanding is you can, yes.
Okay.
I think they're going to have drawings of the plans and so on, is that right?
Yes, yes, we will.
So you'll be able to see what the plans...
Yeah, we would encourage everybody to attend, because we will put the item on your April 20th agenda, and I think we'll have somebody, Ty or Ann, or maybe both, will be here to answer questions, so we can go over the two plans in detail and probably look to the city council to take a formal position on one or the other, because I believe that the cities of Highwood and Highland Park have already done so.
Oh, really? Oh, oh.
Yeah.
Any other questions, John? John, thank you for coming. It's always wonderful to hear. I mean, I always think I know a little bit about Lake Forest Open Lands, and then when you speak or I read any of your materials, I realize how much more there is that you do. And we would be a different community if we didn't have you here kind of keeping us on track, keeping us, I believe you said, grounded.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thanks very much for the opportunity.
For being in charge of that, thanks.
Thank you. That completes my report for this evening.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is comments by council members. I am going to introduce Kathy Waldeck, who will introduce Mike Thomas, the Director of Public Works. And we are going to undertake a consideration of an ordinance amending Section 5.1.045 of the City Code, water wells, as recommended by the Public Works Committee. Alderman Waldeck.
Thanks so much. I'm going to pass it off to Mike, who's got a short presentation for us. This is an item that we've discussed at some length at the Public Works Committee level for a matter of months now. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Good evening, Acting Mayor Byler, members of the city council. This evening's staff would like to present a proposed code amendment, first reading of a proposed code amendment to our water wells. This is something that the Public Works Committee has been evaluating over the past nine months, and we're ready this evening to bring the first draft to you. We'd like to hear some comments and feedback from you, and then we'll bring it to our city attorney, who will refine it, and then bring it back to you for second and final reading. The purpose of this code amendment really is threefold. Number one, it's a way to offer, in our high-demand months, an alternative water source for larger parcels in town. This code amendment is going to focus on allowing water wells on properties that are five acres or larger. Currently, we do not allow water wells for single-family homes, regardless of the size of the parcel. What this proposed amendment is going to do is to allow water wells to be installed on parcels that are five acres or larger. So again, an alternative water source for those parcels. Environmentally, it will assist us at the water plant, it will reduce the use of Lake Michigan water during high-demand periods. And then obviously, historic preservation, the Public Works Committee discussed this on some of the older parcels in town with some very traditional and large landscapes that they wanted to offer this option to them as well. Some very basic background, the City of Lake Forest currently has 14 water wells permitted throughout the city. 10 of them are for what we refer to as pond recharging, and then the water is taken from the pond and irrigated for a golf course or a large open land area. One of them was permitted to avoid the ponds, the two ponds at Stone Bridge from drying up, so it's simply there to avoid dry bottom ponds. And then there are three that are actually non-chlorinated for individual fish and duck ponds at residence homes. As I noted before, historically, water wells were not permitted for single-family homes. Three of them are residential. The other 11 are commercial properties or and/or golf courses, institutions. Lake Forest West Campus, water well. Many of the businesses out on Field Drive, Abbott, Opus, they have water wells. Golf courses, Knollwood Club, Alensia, Conway, they have water wells to... This is difficult, and I apologize for the people at home if they might not be able to read it, but it's a simple bar graph that shows the number of irrigation and pool permits that the city has issued over the past 15 years. The number has totaled close to 1,500. It is decreasing, however, we still, through the Community Development Department, issue these permits on an annual basis. And again, all of this, the majority of this water, in fact, all of this water is coming from our water plant. So the proposed changes are as follows. Number one, we would allow irrigation wells to be installed on residential properties that are five acres or larger, or contiguous properties in a common ownership that again is five, that would be five acres or larger. Number two, we would allow the consideration for irrigation wells for residential properties, three acres or more, if one of the two items were met, either they were protected by a conservation easement, or number two, they were included in the city's local historic district or local landmarks. The irrigation system obviously cannot be connected directly to the potable water supply, so we would have annual inspections to make sure there are no cross-connections whatsoever. Fiscal impact, there is a mistake that I made in the write-up. I noted that there were 41 residential properties meeting this. I was incorrect, there are 56. So my apologies for that. There are 56 residential properties that meet that requirement today. Of the 56, only 18 of them currently have irrigation systems. So if there were the remaining 38 interested, they would also too need to install an irrigation system. But for these 18, we went back and looked at the past three years' record average use of water over not only the winter months but the summer months, and then calculated that summer months, that delta. Approximately for those 18 residential parcels, it would be an estimated loss in revenue of approximately $28,000 if all 18 of them applied for an irrigation well. The estimates do not include if one of the homeowners wanted to change their meter size. Remember, part of your water bill has a fixed rate that is based on your meter size. So if a homeowner says, well, now that I've got a water well, I want to take and reduce my meter size from an inch and a half to three quarters, that's not in this calculation. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Why would we restrict this to local historic district?
The Public Works Committee discussed, there were, really, the focus began on significant gardens within the local historic district, and the demand, the water demand that some of these larger parcels, especially on the east side, put on the water plant during the high month's usage. So that really was the focus. That's how we narrowed it down to say, a majority of these tend to be in the local historic district. That's how it was classified.
And I think, if I may interject, I think the other thing that we discussed, Jack, at the Public Works level, was we have some larger estates that sometimes, you know, are in danger of being broken up, and it might make it easier, you know, for, if someone were to purchase in one of these larger estates, easier for them to maintain it, so we can save and preserve some of our large historic properties.
Sure.
That was just another piece I wanted to...
Another question. I'm going back to when we discussed the water rates, not this year, but I guess in 2013, and we were all into conservation, and how could we, how could we adjust the rates so as to incent conservation? So my question is, why wouldn't we promote this? I mean, is there, is there something that I'm missing? Why would I prevent this at all if in fact it moves water conservation, the principle of water conservation forward?
We all thought it was a...
I guess, if I may, part of what we struggled with is we are cleaning water from the lake so we can drink it, and then people are taking that scarce resource and applying it to their ground for their plants. Water for irrigation doesn't have to be of that quality. So this was a way for us to enable the larger estates, especially those with historic gardens to, or historic properties with gardens, to access water for their land needs that didn't have to be processed through the water plant system.
Right. But it seems like we're preventing this when I'm wondering, I mean, we were saying, well, only, you know, it only has to be where there's protected conservation easements, they have to be included in the local historic district or local landmarks. I mean, why wouldn't we want, why would we have those restrictions at all if this is a water conservation issue? I mean, does this, does this steal water from the water table that might otherwise be used elsewhere?
Yes, the water aquifer, and that is something that we have not evaluated, but if we were to open the floodgates and allow everybody to have a water well, there are towns out west that obviously do not have access to Lake Michigan water well. They're on the same aquifer that this water would be pulled from. So, there's a basic analysis to say, we need to conserve that as well. I think the other side of the equation too is the water revenue, and not knowing how many people will take the city up on doing this, but you've got your entire water main system, your entire sanitary sewer system, all your booster stations, your sanitary lift stations, your water tower, all of that is funded by the sale of water, 100%. There's no property taxes that go to any of that. So there is a, there's a balance that we're trying to meet.
There's a balance here between conservation and revenue.
That's, that's exactly...
I didn't remember, I didn't kind of remember that balance coming up in our conversation with the following year, which is why I was kind of like, well, if we're promoting conservation, I mean, let's go for it.
No, that's, you hit the nail on the head, Jack. It is a balance between, you know, the revenue that we would lose and the other factors that weigh in favor, and we as a committee felt those favorable factors outweighed the loss of revenue. But that's why we wanted to bring it, you know, of course, you know, to hear all your thoughts, and that, well, it's really, it was sort of a policy question, I guess, so...
Okay, I'm all right, I'm all right. I just, I didn't get that.
I have a quick question, ultimately for Vic, I would imagine, but obviously first for Public Works. On the first part, where we talk about five acres or more contiguous properties in common ownership of five or more acres, there's a trend in my neighborhood of buying more than one home and then combining the properties, and two of my neighbors have seven properties between them. And they're reduced, you know, so, but not all their properties are owned by the same entity. Could we maybe add ownership or control? Because it is one property, but they might have a little bit here for, maybe earmarked for a charity or something like that. It's still one family controlling it. It still has one landscape plan, but the properties themselves, so I was wondering if that was something that we could, we could work with.
It certainly is something that we can address. We need to be careful that in so doing, we're not allowing this to be en-run.
Of course.
Insofar as smaller parcels trying to take advantage of this where they're not otherwise intended to.
I haven't thought it through enough, but, and there's no conflict with anybody outstanding right now. I just, I just saw the potential, so...
Other question?
Yeah, a couple. With regard to who you're referring to, one day those are going to be sold as individual homesteads again, I believe. So if you treat them as an amalgam and you put in a well, and that one day they're going to be split up again, that could be problematical. What if we dropped it to three acres? How many more households would be included in the potential for wells if you dropped the minimum from five to three? Just, I'm just curious what the number might be.
I don't know. We ran our analysis on five. We spent a lot of time taking out, for example, ComEd right-of-ways or different larger easements, whether they were state or county or any of that nature. So we really focused on five, but I'll be able to come back to you and give you that answer.
I'm just curious, because there are 6,200 households or something like that in the community, so this is less than 1%.
Correct.
And then the other thing, and this is a philosophical issue, I mean, you've got the financial dynamics which are real, and then in an unreal world, I think if we could all capture the rainwater into cisterns at our houses, whether we're on five acres or a half acre, the world would be better off if we all watered our lawns with untreated water that we're spending money to process out of Lake Michigan. But you can't do that. So, I understand we, we collect revenue that goes back into the sanitary and the storm and infrastructure and so forth, but, I mean, looking to the future of this world, it's just so politically incorrect to water our lawns with treated water, no matter what size property you own.
I have a couple of questions. Did you think in terms of a payback analysis at all? Like, one of these homeowners looking at this and saying, okay, it's going to cost me X number of dollars to put in the well, because these things are not cheap, and maintain the well, which also has ongoing maintenance? And then, you know, what they would, what they would recover and how quickly and so forth, is that part of, part of the thought process at all?
It was not part of the analysis, but I will say, we spoke with a well company that has done work before in Lake Forest. They're located out in Barrington, and they told us that water wells for this type of purpose that would require 50 to 60 gallons per minute coming out of the ground typically cost anywhere from 12,000 to 15,000 to install.
So that's half of the revenue loss for the total, for all the property? So it's, it's going to be a long payback. I guess that's the...
But if...
But different people are spending the money.
Right.
Understood.
I mean, it might be a payback...
And they may not care, you know, I'm just...
But it might be a payback over eight or nine or 10 years, which in the grand scheme of things is perhaps not...
They may not care, yeah, no, it may not be, it may that be, they may not want to have to live with the restrictions that we put on them when, you know, when it's...
I think that's the main motivator.
Right, so, I was just curious if that was part of the thinking. I do agree with, I think it was Alderman Reisenberg, this is very, seems very, very restrictive, almost to the point where I think there are probably two homeowners out there that have been pushing for this. And I think it ought to be opened up a little bit. That's my opinion. I think this is too restrictive. I think it ought to be open to the whole community, not just people that live on the east side, you know, and so forth. And then we ought to do some analysis on that, see what that means, because I just don't think it's fair, frankly. Why should people who own five acres on the east side of town have the right to do this and people on the west side of town don't? Or in the, not in historic district or whatever.
No, no, people who have five acres, whether they're on the east side or the west side, would have a right to do it. It's, it's this, it's the three-acre properties that have that historic...
Okay, I guess I...
There are locally historic homes on the west side, on the south side, on the north side, on the east side.
There's not many on the west side, I wouldn't think.
Historic homes?
I wouldn't think so.
Oh, the Lasker Estate, and there's some, I think there's some landmarks, there's a bunch out there. Those districts, of course, are... Those districts, of course, are closer to town, but there's landmark homes all over the place.
Yeah.
And don't forget that conservation easement is part of that too.
And conservation easement, yeah.
So that's a separate, I'm guessing there are plenty of those on the west side.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking particularly, there's a couple of townhome communities in Conway Farms, taking the one that I live in, where we have 20, 13 units, two to a unit, 26 households. And we're all on a common irrigation system. And our water, annual water bill is something in the neighborhood of 12,000 to 13,000 dollars. So I don't know that we would want to do it, but I mean, you'd have to, that's pretty good financial analysis, you've got a two-year, got a two-year payback. I'm, I'm not, I'm not moving for this, but I'm thinking there's other things out there. If you wanted to move the water conservation needle forward, albeit sacrificing some revenue, you know, to, depending upon where they, where we want the pendulum going this year or next year or, or whatever year, you could think to expand it in that area. I'm not, not advocating here, but I mean, it's something you could keep in the back of your mind.
Well, I think, Alderman, there's no question that we took a very conservative approach in this. I think we're dipping our toe in because there's so many other moving pieces.
Yeah.
Based on other changes that you've made with the water rates and so forth, that I think what we want to do is, let's open it up to at least this first 56 or so parcels, get a year under our belt. We can bring it back to the council in a year and say, okay, how did it go? What problems did we experience? Those kinds of things. And then see if we want to loosen it up, because you can always loosen it up, but if you make it too loose, it's hard to then tighten it up after that.
You can walk before you run.
Exactly.
I think there's also two kinds of conservation out there. There's the, the kind of conservation that we're talking about as a necessity to make sure our plant can supply water for the community. And then there's the conservation that open lands would talk about of not needing irrigation.
Right.
So I think they're, they're, they should, we should figure out which one we're talking about at which time too, so...
Did open land, did, did open lands give you any input?
We didn't seek their input, no.
I know they have some pretty strong views about the...
The other kind of conservation.
Pluses and minuses of irrigating, you know, labs.
Ground is, ground is the new green.
Well, it just, you know, it's not good, it's not good for the trees, for one thing, for sure. I mean, our neighborhood, you know, you can almost see...
Oh, yeah.
People that have irrigation, their trees are suffering.
Yep.
I think the impetus was, we've had a few residents step forward and, and ask about this, and we know that there's a handful out there who are really interested. And so we don't know what the response will be moving forward, so that, that kind of remains to be seen.
Is there going to be a minimum depth required for drilling wells? Or have you not thought about that at all?
That's, that's up to, once, once they begin to do the drilling, really the expense is based upon the depth. The average depth, I believe, is about 180 feet that they need to go down to to get this GPM. But in some areas, they need to go deeper. They need to go upwards of 400 feet deep. So the expense obviously will increase the deeper they need to go. But the average depth for this type of a system is about 180 feet.
What about a shallow well hitting that methane gas and, you know, having smelly water through the irrigation system? Is that something where it risks where?
It's possible. Absolutely, it's possible. On shallow wells, you don't have that with deep wells, but you have it with shallow wells, without questions, yes. That sulfur is really what it is. It's a sulfur odor.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the, in the audience tonight who would like to speak to this issue? Please come forward and, and, oh, no, no, this is, this is your first opportunity to speak on this subject, but I'll, I'll, I'll offer another opportunity. Okay. Any public comment on this? Okay. Then I, I would like, I think, to ask for a motion to grant a first reading of an ordinance amending section 51.045, water wells to permit private wells under certain conditions.
Go move.
Second.
And this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Alderman Moore would like to talk on another subject. Thank you.
I received a email from a citizen that was concerned about trains, their cargo, and the safety for the community. And I spoke to city manager Bob Kylie today, and he explained some of the nuance of that. And rather than me trying to repeat it, I was hoping you could discuss, including the lack of potential for freight trains where the gentleman lived.
Certainly. The question really seemed to center on where there are freight trains going on what we call the Union Pacific North, which is the line running through the center of town. And late this afternoon, I did learn that that is not indeed the case. There is only commuter line from Ogilvy Center to Lake Bluff. I think many of you know that if you drive up Green Bay Road, you cross over a line there. That is north then that connects, and so there could be freight heading on that Union Pacific line north of Lake Forest corporate boundaries, but certainly not in Lake Forest. There is a considerable amount of freight traffic that does occur on the line running parallel to Route 41 and also the one further west in Lake Forest. The inquiry also, or the individual indicated that they contacted the railroad companies and said, well, can you tell us what is being transported? And the railroad company said, no, we're not going to tell you what's being transported. Couple of reasons for that is, number one, you're not going to just take a random caller and, and tell them what's going on. But really, there has been, since 9/11, there's been a real ramp up of security issues related to what is being transported, when, where, and how, to avoid any potential, you know, terrorist activity or any of those kinds of things. So even the city of Lake Forest has no control over what goes on those rail lines through the city of Lake Forest. That's controlled by the federal government, nor do we know what is actually in those freight cars as you see them if you're stopped at one of the freight, or at one of the crosswalks. I will say however, though, that since the accident that occurred in Canada, there was another one recently out in Galena, the city's fire and, I think even police department have been involved with the Canadian National, the Union Pacific, and others to do more advanced training on hazardous spills, hazardous waste, how to deal with these kinds of situations as they occur. There's no question that there is hazardous material running through our borders. We are very aware of it at a staff level, and I would, don't want to put words in the chief's mouth, but I would say that he's probably more concerned about that as a potential problem than any kind of weather-related issue that we would have within our, within our corporate boundaries. But we are somewhat limited, not somewhat, we are very limited in what we can do or can't do, because we don't control what traffic is on those lines. So I hope that answers the questions. But there is no freight on the Union Pacific North line, but I know from my house, I can hear a lot of the freight traffic on the Canadian National line running parallel to Route 41.
So if Mr. Hill is listening tonight, no, we're not allowed to know anything, and there's nothing we can do about it, so...
No, and it's really a national security issue more than anything else.
Well, but Bob, I, I think a lot of us have read that. It's very reassuring to know that our, that our public safety officials are, are aware of our concern about that and that they're on top of it. So thank you. That's, that's, I'm glad you brought it up for that reason alone.
Yeah, exactly.
To know that we're, that we are paying attention.
Thank Mr. Hill for bringing it up through his email, so...
Any other, Alderman, have any issues?
I just look to remind everybody that tomorrow is a day we're all supposed to vote.
Thank you.
And you know you can't vote for the city, the mayor of the city of Chicago, but there are a number of other things that we're all supposed to be voting for, so please, please vote.
At our usual voting places, I think. Thank you, thank you. This is the opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items, and I think this would be your chance. Thank you. You'll come to the mic and state your name, please, and address.
My name's David Fontana, 701 West Woodland, Lake Bluff, Illinois.
I'm Richard Fiori, 240 South Central, Hywood, Illinois.
I spoke to the council last month about the police towing list. No one has gotten back to me yet, so I wanted to come check up, let you know, I'm still waiting for a call. I wanted to inform you what we do. Being on a, on a police towing list, we have to live our lives 15 minutes at a time. We have to be available seven days a week, 356 days a year, 24 hours a day. Most of us have to leave our families. That's what we do for the community in being on this list. That is a big contract that has been given to one company that was never put out to bid or run fairly. I really think you guys should look into this, that it should be run fairly. And as soon as I finished talking last month, I heard you guys talk about your pension obligations and about losing the 250,000 a year from the Norwood Fire Department. I had told you I had a solution that could start saving you guys money, even 200,000 a year in salaries just by restructuring. I, I, I used to be a policeman. Many, a few of you don't know me, but I know Mr. Edelman, you've known my family for 25-plus years, and I would never make that comment if I didn't know I could back it up and show you guys how to do it. But I haven't heard from anybody yet. You know, consultants get paid hundreds of thousands of dollars from cities. I'm offering to give my time, because my whole family lives in Lake Forest now. We've been looking for a house in Lake Forest. I want to help the community and tell you where you can save money and help you in things you, you may not be aware of. I've been friends with every policeman in this area for the six towns for, for 30-plus years, and I can give you information on what happens and how you can restructure to save money. But I'm most concerned about the towing list being run fairly also. If any of you have any questions, I would like to hear from someone, because I think it's, I may be dressed like this, I'm not in a suit, I don't go into work in a suit, but I have common sense and I know a lot about math and numbers and everything else. It's the only thing I ever did good in my life, and I can enlighten a lot of you if I was given time at some point. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
I'd like to answer, I'd like to ask you a question. I saw a letter about two weeks ago that was written by the chief of police, I believe, to you.
I've never received a letter yet.
Chief, you want to come forward? Maybe it was a memorandum to the council? I don't remember how it was written.
It might have been sent just to us.
No.
No, it, it was mailed to Mr. Fontana, so I'll make sure you get it.
I'll give you, maybe it mailed to the...
It could, it could have went to, I'm not sure what address it went to. I think it was, don't you have a P.O. box for your business or something?
Just to verify what the chief said. I mean, I saw a copy of this well over two weeks ago.
Yes. It was like a week after the meeting, I think, I sent it.
Yeah, for sure.
I think we all got copies of that.
Right, right.
Do you need Mr.?
If he wants a copied letter, I'll, I'll give him a copied letter too.
You want my... Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sure.
I'd be happy to talk to any of you.
Thank you.
I do think this is something that, you know, under the heading of, you know, contracting general policies, that, you know, it is a substantial contract, and I think it ought to be bid. And I think we might find that some of the towing services might not want to bid when they saw what all the requirements were, they might not have the capability. But it should be bid. I mean, I don't see why we're not bidding that contract.
And most of the towns rotate them fairly. I mean, check every town around you. Whoever's on the list, it goes in order. If your turn comes up, it's a tire change, somebody with no money, an abandoned car, your turn is your turn. And everything is rotated fairly, you know, and, and that's, every other department does it, even Lake Bluff does it now. They never had a list, and now they have a list, because it's the right thing to do. And no matter what comes up, that's your turn, and that's what you get. I mean, we put a lot on the line, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and you got to be there in 15 minutes. No one can understand how hard that is. You could be sleeping at 1:00 in the morning, you could be at your kid's school event at any time and have to walk out and leave your family. That's a lot that the towing companies give up to be on that 24-hour call. And, and yes, they do rotate the accidents and disabled cars, but why not everything? I mean, if we're sitting around for that chance of that one call every three weeks when other companies are getting two or three, other companies getting maybe two a day? I mean, with everybody having to be around on 15-minute call, it should be rotated fairly, because we're all putting that investment into it. A tow truck costs $100,000 now for a cheap one. The insurance, okay, the plates are 600 a year. The, the fuel is 5,000 a month per truck. I mean, there's a lot we put into this, and, and we're not expecting anything. And I've talked to every owner of every company on that list, and everybody talks about how it's not, it's not rotated every call. Like every other police department owner does, they rotate whatever the call is, that's what you get. Whether it's a guy with no money, then you have to impound his car, or the person, an accident, whatever it is, that's what you get. Even if it's a jump start at 3:00 in the morning, if it's your turn, that's what you get. And that's how every other police department does it, because we give up so much of our life for this.
Thank you, Mr. Fontana. We appreciate your, appreciate your raising this issue.
Yeah. And Alderman, to respond, we are in communications with the city attorney that we are proceeding with putting a bid together. Not everybody may be happy, because there may be some expectations on type of service you can provide, when you can provide it, those kinds of things. But we will put a fair bid process together and bring it back to the council.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Then let's go on to the items for omnibus, omnibus vote consideration, of which I believe there are 18. The first is the approval of the March 16, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Second is the check register for the period February 21st to March 27, 2015. The third is a resolution of sympathy for former police sergeant Jim Rogers. Number four is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of the city code related to plumbing as recommended by the Construction Codes Commission. This is final, final approval. The fifth is ratification of prior city council actions from February 17, 2015 and March 16, 2015. Six, award of the Lake Forest portion of the 2015 joint concrete pavement paging, paving, sorry, try that again, joint concrete pavement patching contract. Number seven is award of bid for the replacement of a one-half ton extended cab pickup truck for the forestry section included in the fiscal year 2016 capital equipment budget. Eight is the award of a bid for the replacement of a three-quarter ton extended cab pickup truck for the parks section included in the fiscal year 2016 capital equipment budget. Number nine is award of a bid for the replacement of a three-quarter ton extended cab pickup truck for the parks section included in the fiscal year 2016 capital equipment budget. Number nine is award of a bid for the replacement of a parking scooter for the police department included in the fiscal year 2016 capital equipment budget. 10 is award of a bid for the replacement of four refuse scooters for the sanitation section included in the fiscal year 2016 capital equipment budget. Number 11 is award of a bid for the replacement of a three-quarter ton regular cab pickup truck for the water and sewer utilities section included in the fiscal year 2016 capital equipment budget. 12 is approval to waive the competitive bidding process to purchase a new basin ramp. 13 is to award a contract for the recreation department tennis program. 14 is approval of a contract for annual grounds maintenance services and parks fiscal year 2016 budget. 15 is approval of fiscal year 2016 contract for emerald ash borer tree and stump removals. 16 is award of the bid for the municipal services lightning protection project included in the fiscal year 2015 CIP budget. 17, award of bid for the municipal services epoxy floor system included in the fiscal year 2015 CIP budget. And 18 is award of a bid for the operation of the city's compost facility. And so the question now for the council is if you would like to have any of these items taken separately.
I have a...
But we can have discussion.
We can have discussion without pulling them out, right?
That's correct, isn't it? Yes, so, yes. Discuss away.
I have one comment and one question. First of all, thank you to Michael Thomas for looking into doing the floors ourselves. It didn't work out, but that was important to do. And then the, the parking scooter.
Yeah.
I'm, I think my wife, her new car, which is a Lexus, is less than this, or about the same price. And I'm not joking. It's a, you could buy, you know, three of the new John Deere Gators if you wanted to be small and, and, and put sides on them, and it just seems like a ridiculous amount of money for a scooter. And I'm sure it has features or has been, you know, specked in by a, a union somewhere for some, something that nobody else can give you, but please comment on this $35,000 UTV.
So with regards to the parking scooter, just to begin with, on some of the capital equipment items, basically when you get above purchasing squad cars and/or pickup trucks, everything becomes territorial. So specifically, for example, on the garbage scooters and on this one, which was a very specific... specific product, we call the gopher scooter, we sent bids all across the U.S., but the Chicagoland vendor is the one that typically submits the bid and the only bid, even though we've asked for bids from companies in Indianapolis, Minnesota, Detroit, wherever. In this case, only one bid was submitted. We called and checked with a company up in Canada that makes this to confirm that it was a competitive number, if we were to, you know, further request a bid from the Minneapolis or the Indianapolis, and he said, yes, those are very good numbers. But with regards specifically to this, it's a, to a certain extent, it is a one-of-a-kind unit. It is something that is very easy for the parking control group, the C S O officers, to get in and out of small spots quickly. They mark all the wheels with chalk. It's something easy for them to use, and it's something that we will keep for at least fifteen years. So I recognize it is expensive. I recognize that the line item is over budget, but we're under budget in other items in our capital equipment funds, so capital equipment for F Y sixteen will be balanced. But it is, it's, it's a one-of-a-kind, it's specific, there are not many people that make it. And again, it's something that provides an ease of use for the C S O officer as he or she is marking all the cars that are parked uptown or in a parking lot.
I would, I would just like to say, we really shouldn't be specking products that only one vendor can sell us, whether it's a filter for a, a water plant or a car that serves our purpose, but we don't get any competitive bids on. It's literally three times the cost of the most expensive Kubota John Deere U T V you can buy. And those are all really good machines. They, they come with doors, they, they look the same, I mean, they're.
Four-wheel drive.
What?
Four-wheel.
Four-wheel drive. So I believe you that, that, there's, there's two parts to a competitive bid, and in this case, the most important component is the spec. If you spec a car that only one person can bid on, you're going to get one bid. And I'm not, I don't mean to be stupid and speak obviously, but I, I believe that we should, at the very least, come up with a, when our corporate governance here in Lake Forest, we shouldn't be buying things that only one person can sell as a, as a rule and, and just have that fall into conflict when, when we're forced to buy a piece of software for a hundred thousand dollars because somebody at the state declared it the only piece of software a particular department can buy. We should, we should go to fight for these things. It's just wrong. It's, 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 it's a kind of cheating, in my opinion.
Well, again, could we, could we?
We're victims of it, so.
The challenge is finding something that is roadworthy, road safe, that, that will meet all the standards you have when driving a vehicle on the road, whether you're driving out to M S on Route sixty to fill up with gas, or you're driving uptown to mark someone's car, the vehicle itself has got to be roadworthy and pass all the different requirements and standards. The reality is, is there's not many of those units out there. You know, Highwood, for example, at times will use an A T V in the summer. That's their choice. They've got someone on a four-wheel A T V driving through.
I never suggested an, an A T V, never said A T V, don't suggest it, don't know if they're safe. I said U T V.
Okay.
They're bigger, heavier than these vehicles.
Other products out there that, that provide, that, that allow that C S O officer, that typically there's only one on at a time for the entire town, to be able to get through the different shopping areas, get into all the parking lots, in and out, and that's, that's what this vehicle does. So I understand what you're saying. We were trying to match up the service that we want to provide and that we have provided for many years via a vehicle that works for us, and this obviously has, the one we're replacing is fifteen years old. So it's something that we just, in our own opinion, thought that it worked well and we were going to continue, continue with.
To me, it's a, it's a bigger issue of, as I mentioned, the specification of products only one vendor can produce. And while this is only twenty-five hundred bucks a year, the water plant is more, and the other products that we have to buy collectively, it's a material problem for Lake Forest. Individually, every decision that's come forward has been well thought through and well defended, but collectively, it's a, it's a problem you can't ignore. And I'm done with my comments on that, so.
Yep.
If I could just add to that, I felt the same way about this particular item number nine. And is it four-wheel drive, by the way?
It is not, no, it is not. It's actually a three-wheel scooter. It's a three-wheel scooter.
It is more maneuverable than U T Vs you and I are familiar with. And it is twenty-five hundred dollars a year if we get fifteen years out of it. I'm just curious what kind of parking ticket revenue we generate a year to offset that twenty-five hundred.
I was thinking, I was thinking the same thing.
But, but even the revenue doesn't excuse the potential for a bad decision.
Absolutely.
Because if the revenue's five thousand and the machine costs twenty-five hundred, if we only spent, spent five hundred bucks on the machine per year, it's still, if there's a potential out there, so.
Point is, I agree with your point.
I'm sure it's a fine machine for parking, for writing parking tickets, but it just, it stinks because it's so expensive.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Parking ticket revenue, I can't tell you what the parking officer does because officers are writing parking tickets at the beach and stuff too, so I can't really break it down by what he does, but he's obviously doing the times, areas uptown, the parking lots, and where this vehicle does have its benefits, he can get out of it on the right side, not getting out into traffic. The doors slide as opposed to opening, so he's not having to open a door in traffic. And we talked about things like, you know, smaller cars, like, you know, like the, what's the new one, the Fiat or something like that, but you can't get a right-hand drive, the doors won't be opening in traffic. So it's, when you're on Westminster or Deer Path or any of the side streets in town here, a, a car will block traffic when he's stopping to either write a ticket or mark the tires. That's the big, that's why this narrow vehicle works much better. I wish there was something on the market cheaper because I told Mike the same thing. I go, I can't believe that costs more than a Tahoe. But, but it does, so.
Well, the other thing I'd point out is, and, and this does, your point is somewhat different, I think, Dave, that we have to sort of, as a matter of policy, try to find ways not to be in a situation where, for anything we buy, where there's only one supplier. And that's, that's, that's a broad issue. In this case, the other thing, let's remember, seventy percent of our expenditures are for personnel. So if you save ten thousand dollars on this vehicle, but you reduce the efficiency of that person's work by ten percent, chances are it's a false economy. That, the ability of that person to sit upright, take one step out of the car, never leave the vehicle, do the, do the marking, and then get back in and, I mean, they can whip down the street really fast, and you can't do that if you're, you know, saddling and unsaddling on an S U V.
Correct.
Plus, you're going to have people getting repetitive injuries and all kinds of other stuff, so. I, I mean, I think, I, I kind of get this, it's really, it is, anytime we see one of these things, it's frustrating. But, you know, most of the Tahos aren't going to last for fifteen years either, right? So.
No.
I suppose my wife is paid for a significant percentage of the cost.
We could, we could just, we could just institute a parking fee for all the realtors.
Yes.
And then have them not need, and then we wouldn't need this thing, right? They could just automatically, when you get your license, you can pay the parking fee every year.
And I think Alderman Moore, your, your point is well taken, and I think the staff has an obligation that if it appears as though the specs are written too tightly, that there's only one bidder or one potential bidder out there, that we better have a darn good reason and be able to explain it probably better than we did in this write-up.
Well, I'll be going online tonight to find a different parking scooter.
All right.
And I won't bring it up publicly, but I'll.
No, but, point well taken.
Any other comments on any of the items on the omnibus, of the eighteen omnibus items?
Well, to continue this theme, there are, I think, three other no bids essentially, or, or one bids, the landscape, if I read this correctly, the lightning protection, and the recycling, running the recycling plant. Can, could we get some comment on those other three?
Gentlemen, I'll let everybody come forward. I know Chuck, you've got one.
There's a pattern here, you know, what, I, I fully intend to continue this too. So anytime there's a single bidder, you can expect to have to explain it.
Yeah, I, I can speak to the mow contract. There were actually five bidders. We bid this out last year. It was for three consecutive years. So we're, we didn't show the other five, but we did last year. We're just showing the one that we're.
This is just a.
Continuation.
A renewal of a three-year agreement, essentially.
Exactly.
Okay. Or one more year of a three-year, okay. Understood.
Which one was that for?
The mow contract.
The landscape.
Landscape.
Why do we not, we have all this mowing equipment and mow all the parks, why don't, I, I was, forgot to ask that question.
We are, we are using the mow equipment, we're mowing all the parks. This is specifically for cul-de-sacs and right-of-ways.
And why aren't we doing that with the same equipment?
We used to, but as, as we looked at the cost, we found it to be more efficient to do it with the contract. Ultimately, it's just a matter of economics. It, it works out better for us. We decided to keep the parks. We, we think that we can still do those at a lower cost.
I'd start with the lightning protection. It was two bids. We did send it out on the public bid process and only received two, but we also contacted other people. It's, it's always been an issue trying to get more than three bidders to bid out lightning protection. One of the biggest reasons, I think, is the liability. Most of these companies are electrical companies that have a niche off of a side business that they work the lightning prediction, or protection. And so we were shaking the bushes and rattling the trees, so to speak, to try and get as many people as we could, and we put it out to public bid, and we could only, only two people applied. And the, the person that pro-lightning protection, most of that company came from H L P because they used to be the only thing, the only people in town. These actually are so spread out that a lot of these companies will travel around. H L P was doing a job down in North Carolina, for instance. So they, they mobilize, that's just how few of them there are. So same to go with the compost center. We put that out to bid, put an advertisement in the paper. We sent it out to twelve people that are in the industry locally. The last time we did this, three years ago, we did receive a couple other bids. One was disqualified because it didn't meet the spec. The other one did not meet the, it was higher bid.
Hey, Dan, while you're standing there, Alderman Moore raised a point about the epoxy floor. I think in effect you are doing it, you're just buying the materials from somewhere, is that correct?
Correct. We bid that out as well.
You are doing it internally.
Yes.
The materials are expensive.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were.
Your suggestion.
At twenty-five thousand dollars.
I thought you analyzed it and picked a company to do it.
We picked a supplier.
I misread it then.
Yeah, we'll be doing that in-house.
Well, even better, good.
Yeah.
David didn't read the agenda, can I?
I did not read.
Make sure you have real good ventilation when you do that.
Absolutely. It's a good thing is it's a garage so we can open both sides and get cross ventilation, very good cross ventilation, so.
George, I get your.
Yep, done, thanks.
Any other, any other, yeah.
Question on the concrete pavement. I was surprised at the variance between the high and the low. It's an example where there's many bids, but the variance between the high and the low is, is pretty significant, and I just wonder if there isn't a quality issue? Why would those bids range between fifty-eight, number six, excuse me, between fifty-eight thousand and a hundred and three thousand?
The, well, I can tell you the highest bidder on there, bids work here all the time. I don't think in all the years I've been here has ever gotten a bid. They're always very high, they do very good work, but they mainly do subcontractor work for larger companies. They, I don't know how much effort they put into putting their bid in, I think they're just looking at, hey, if they're the only one bidding, they might get it. So that one you can, well, that's happened before. But that one you can kind of take out, that does.
Irony.
Bring the, the numbers down a little bit. The, all of the other companies on there have done a considerable amount of work in Lake Forest and all have done good work. So the one who the low bid has done it many times in Lake Forest and has must have just found a way to, you know, through efficiencies and knowing the, the city was able to put in the lowest bid, but we've never had problems with their performance before.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Isn't, isn't the bigger issue with Baker?
Yes, on the asphalt.
Who has essentially cornered the market.
It's starting to look that way. I don't want to, you know, draw final conclusions based on a couple of bids just this year, but this was the first year that the city only received one bid for asphalt resurfacing.
For hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Correct. More than a million, right? Wasn't it one point eight million?
I don't know, but if, if this was a, if this was a much larger company, there would be antitrust issues.
Yeah, the city was concerned because that has never, ever happened before. It's only been since current contracting, basically left town, closed down the.
He bought them out, didn't he? Didn't he buy them out and close the plant?
Well, the company was leaving the area there, they're kind of relocating a lot of their work, their services to Texas. Baker did buy the local plant.
Just to make sure that nobody else would go in there.
Yeah, that I.
My forbid.
Don't really know.
It's not an omnibus, though, we should keep moving.
Yeah.
What's that? That's not, that's not an omnibus.
We got, we got a half hour before the game starts, for Christ sakes. I feel, I feel like Kent Novit.
Let's not, we don't have to kill time.
Okay, let's move this along.
Okay, moving on.
Any other?
And I'm sure, I do, I do want to note that item number one, the minutes, did have a Scrivener's error, so if the motion might be to approve the consent agenda or the omnibus agenda with the correction on the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I think we need a roll call vote on this.
Absolutely. Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances, and we do not have any ordinances, so we can move on to new business. And we are going to have Bob Els, Superintendent of Engineering, talk to us about consideration of an intergovernmental agreement with the Lake Forest, County Forest Preserve District and the Lake Forest Academy for a project to provide a pedestrian bridge and a trail connection from the Middle Fork Savannah to Town Line Park. Very exciting. Okay.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Bydler, members of the council. The new business item before you this evening is a request to have council approve the draft intergovernmental agreement between Lake Forest Academy, Lake Forest Forest Preserve District, and the City of Lake Forest in its substantial form, and to authorize a city manager to execute the final agreement once the changes that are highlighted in your packet are made and approved by the city attorney. A little background on this project, I know some of these maps attachments were not in your packet, they were not available at the time. This first map here shows the project location for anyone that's, I think everyone has seen this project in one form or another, but this shows over here at Academy Drive and Route sixty where this project would be constructed. If you, if you remember, originally, this was, the forest preserve started this, they wanted to have a project to extend their Middle Fork Savannah trails over to Lake Forest Academy, and that, of course, the big part of the project includes a two-hundred-and-ten, I believe, ten-foot bridge across the Metro tracks. The Forest Preserve District was going to do all of that work. The city separately was going to do a bit of work down here at Route sixty to be able to bring that trail across to Town Line Park. Once the Forest Preserve got into their, got their final design done, they realized that the project was going to be much, much more costly than they had anticipated, so they decided to look at the, the opportunities to get grant funding for the work. So they approached the city, asked if the city wanted to incorporate our small part in there, and of course, the city was willing to do that. The grant has been applied for. We should know towards the end of summer, I'm hoping around July or August, whether I'm hoping around July or August, whether the grant was approved. If it's not approved, this, everything else I'm about to say means nothing, and this will go away until it's reapplied for again next year. So, other maps we have here. Okay, this shows more detail. This is where the Forest Preserve will extend their trails up to the Metro right-of-way, bring the bridge over, and then the west approach here to Academy Drive. It also includes putting in the trail down to Route sixty. This is the point where, when I talk about the city portion of the project, that's doing some drainage work down here at Route sixty, putting in a crosswalk across Route sixty, then across the road into Town Line Park. It includes push-button signals for pedestrians, bicyclists. It includes curb cuts, sidewalk, ADA ramps and stuff at the intersection. So basically, so that is the project. And this is all part of the Forest Preserve's master plan for linking all this yellow on here are existing trails. It's all color-coded. It shows, this is the project here. This is a future project the city is, is looking into right now with the CPOA to extend what we're talking about tonight over towards the tollway. And then Metawa would bring that over to existing Forest Preserve. This is all about linking regional trails in the area. This is a cut from the city bike master plan, shows about the same information. So that's what the project is about. The intergovernmental agreement that's in your packet has the information in there that's being changed, that's highlighted in, in the write-up and on the financial chart, is all the financial information. What they sent us a few weeks ago included some very confusing formulas. It can, included some open-ended, unknown, possible Metro costs that they wanted the city to sign up to pay a third of. It included the fifty-thousand-dollar donation to the overall project that the city had committed to last year. But in the end, we could not quantify what the overall cost was gonna be. So staff consulted with the city manager, went back to the Forest Preserve and said, basically, we have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars. We'd be very happy to give you one hundred thousand dollars, and you use the money the way you see fit. They have agreed to that. They have proposed back that we would give them the hundred thousand dollars that is budgeted. Out of that, they would cover the city's portion of the design that's ongoing for this right now. They would cover the city's portion of construction up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There will be no Metro costs borne by the city. And anything that might be left would be considered the donation, even though it will be less than fifty thousand dollars that the city agreed to last year. They can do all that because if the, we get the grant, they will only be paying twenty percent of the actual construction cost. The grant will pay the other eighty percent of the cost. Right now, the city's estimate for our portion of the work is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But that is only twenty-five thousand dollars if you do the, if you do the, I'm sorry, twenty-thousand dollars at twenty percent if the grant's approved. So they have covered the city up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, meaning they would pay up to thirty thousand dollars in construction costs for this. So that gives us a bit of wiggle room between our current estimate and the hundred and fifty thousand. Any...
This is just, those numbers are just the city's portion. It doesn't include building the bridge and so forth.
Oh, no. The, this project, including design, is just under two-point-eight million dollars. So the city, in the end, will pay a hundred thousand dollars to be a part of this and to have that put in. What, what we're doing with the finance is just simplifying the agreement with the Forest Preserve, getting rid of some unknown, open-ended costs, just making it much simpler.
Quick question, just to clarify something.
Yes, sir.
In the, and I didn't look at the ordinance enough to, maybe you can answer this for us. It says pedestrian and trail connect, pedestrian bridge and trail connection. The exciting part for me was a connection to the bike path. I'm just assuming this is gonna be built for bicycles as well. You don't have to walk your bike across. It'll be like the bridges over, up by one-seventy-six, right?
Yes, the bridge itself will be twelve feet wide.
Okay, so big enough for bikes.
It's a standard, the, the trail is, you know, the, the most current name changes seems like every couple of years. The current term is a shared-use trail. That, that, so, but it's bicyclists, it's pedestrians.
It speaks to bicycles later, but it just said pedestrian and trail connection. I just wanted to make sure we didn't end up with a skinny thing with stairs somewhere, kind of.
Nope.
It's a ramp, right?
Everything will be ADA meets ADA.
Bob, I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat a comment. You know what I'm gonna say, because we spoke about it a little bit earlier. My only concern, I don't, concern's probably too strong a word, but just, there is a, a segment of Route sixty that would be crossed by bicyclists or, and/or pedestrians. And I just would wanna make sure that we made that crossing as safe as possible. I think that there, you know, Route sixty's a busy road. There's a lot going on in that segment of Route sixty. You've got Lake Forest Academy, traffic coming and going from Lake Forest Academy. You've got Conway Farms, you've got Town, the, the park there. And especially when you're traveling west and you're coming off of forty-one or Waukegan Road, and you're kind of going uphill a little bit, that traffic light comes up rather quickly. So I just don't know, you know, I think we just need to put some thought into how we would make that crossing as safe as, as possible.
And that crossing is being designed to all the latest standards for a standard intersection. The signals that are out there, there are, there is a push-button control on either side of the street. Presently, that will be upgraded to what you see, for instance, over at Waukegan and Everett. That was one of the latest intersections that were redone in the city with the push buttons on each corner that have the sound, the visual. It'll have the pedestrian walk heads down there.
I just think the nature, the nature of this stretch of Route sixty is, is a lot different in character from Waukegan and Everett. And I'm not saying this can't be done, and it can't be done safely. People will have to certainly get adjusted to it because it's just not something that you expect, those of us that drive that road often, expect. So I'm, I'm not saying it can't be done or that this isn't a good idea, but it is something that I hope thought is put into, to make it.
And you won't be, you, they won't be running for their life across the road. When you're driving on Route sixty and somebody indicates a crossing by pressing that button, you will get a red light when you're driving. So they will be crossing on protected red from both directions.
I'm wondering if, uh, some additional signage. I, as a bicyclist, I know one of the biggest hazards that I face is the turning, the, the right on red people who, who may not be expecting, if it's not a regular, I'm thinking of actually forty-one and Wesley is, 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 can be a problem. And, and, you know, there's, you're always gonna, you know, they're supposed to defer to the bicyclist, but you're always, as a bicyclist, you always have to be on your guard about the, the right-turning cars. So I'm wondering there if we just wanna at least initially put some, put some signage out to just say, watch for bicyclists. Won't be many pedestrians probably, but there may be. But just, just to, at least in the beginning. Bob, the other question I have, I just wanna, on this, on this council action, there may be some other questions. I, you, you said before, and if we don't get the grant, none of this will happen. So I just wanna, the, the, the actual council action doesn't have any reference to that. So none of our money is expended if the federal grant doesn't come. Is that correct?
Only the design portion, the city...
Okay. And so is it only the design portion that you want us to vote on tonight? No?
No, it would be the entire portion.
Okay.
But the design under the, under the intergovernmental agreement, that's gonna come back after these changes are made to the city attorney and the city manager. There will be a stipulation in there that if the grant is not, I believe it's gonna have the date December thirty-first of this year. If grant money is not obtained by that date, then the, obviously, the project won't go forward, but the agreement will be null and void. But we will still have to pay for the design work that's being done on our behalf.
That could be used at a later point, so that's...
But that is part of the hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
How much of it?
Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, I've carried my bike across those railroad tracks a couple dozen times. The, the thought is, and the presumption isn't to traverse down Route sixty, it's to cross there and then go through Conway Farms to get to Everett Road where the Forest Preserve built the bike overpass. And where next year, they're building that one-mile segment to take you to the Daniel Wright Woods. So we should put some signage up by Town Line Park, either stripe the road for a bike lane, or just put some signage up, directional signage for people unfamiliar, that once they cross south over Route sixty, how to get over to Everett Road and the, and the overpass.
Doesn't the Forest Preserve, I'm just trying to think how often, where they put the, the maps. And they do have them periodically, and I don't know if they would wanna, you know, have a map stand out there or something that could be helpful to people. But we've stopped a number of times, gotten sort of quasi-lost, and pulled out the maps and figured out where we are, and, and, not in that location, but in other forest preserve places. So they may be, they, they may be able to help us with that.
Sure.
Any other, any other thoughts on this? I think we are hoping to do the council action then. Any, any other comments?
I, I just have a question. I was out, not so long ago, cross-country skiing out there, maybe a month ago. And the old roadway to the old bridge has been, they've gone in and clear-cut all the trees out of there. I guess it's supposed to look better when it's done. And I guess it was a lot of invasive species and things that, that's, but it's pretty striking when you go out there now. I mean, I, I've been going out there for years. I've never seen that, that embankment before. It's huge. I mean, is the bridge gonna tie into that? Or is it gonna, they're gonna take advantage of that? Okay.
At roadway, the embankment's coming off on each side. That, that is where the bridge is going. It will...
So it's going right back on the original location of the, of...
Correct.
The Armour Bridge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which, I mean, there's a lot of infrastructure there that can be reused. I'm glad to hear that.
And there was a, an orange line that took Route sixty and went west from this intersection that we're terminating on. It said proposed bike path, a couple slides back or a slide back?
Yes.
Any imminence, is that just an idea, or is there a...
That, right now, the city in conjunction, that would be right here.
Yeah.
The, the city in conjunction with the Conway Park Office Association is having a feasibility study done to look at, to basically find out how much, that's always the, the first question, to put a shared-use path along the north side of sixty from Academy, the terminus of this, to the tollway.
So things are actually, you're looking into it?
Yes, certainly, yeah. We should, within a couple of weeks, have the feasibility study back from the consultant to tell us, are there any big showstoppers in, in having that installed, and what would the cost be? And that, at that time, the CPOA and the city will have to decide whether they wanna go ahead with formal design on that. Obviously, it would, you know, become a grant project, but there would be a, an outlay for design. So we're hoping to have that in a couple of weeks.
That would be an enormous improvement if they could figure out a way to do it.
It would. And then Metawa would take it from their side. They've done a lot of theirs on the other side.
And get over to the Des Plaines trail.
Correct, yep.
Exactly.
Bikers could stop for lunch at Whole Foods.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Okay. So I, I think I'm, I'm ready to ask for a, a, a motion for the council action, based on the staff recommendation that we approve the proposed intergovernmental agreement in substantially the form attached here too, and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement upon review and approval by the city attorney. In addition, staff request city council approve a portion or all of the amount to be paid in fiscal year sixteen as an advance against the fiscal year seventeen CIP allocation with a fiscal year sixteen supplemental appropriation being submitted at a later date if necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Whatever he said.
Can I ask the clerk to call the roll?
Certainly. Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Madam Chair Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
All right. We are up to eight additional items for council discussion. And we need to move into, I need a motion to move into executive session. I think I have to keep going, don't I, to say what, what it is we're doing pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash two C five. The city council will be discussing the consideration of land acquisition. And I need a motion.
So moved. Second?
And I believe we need a roll call.
You're doing, I'll just mention for benefit of everybody in the audience and at home is that this is for discussion only. There's no action expected to be taken once we come out of executive session.
Okay.
So we'll just adjourn.
Correct.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Madam Chair Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
I have one quick question for sixty-second answer, and I'm sorry Chuck left. How did the Route sixty median fare this winter? Do we know yet, or too soon to tell?
You, Mike gave it a thumbs up, but we'll send out an email from Chuck. I, I wouldn't trust Mike. He's the one who put all the asphalt, or all the salt out, so.
Not much, though.
We'll have Chuck send out a response on that. I think well, but we'll see.
We're adjourned into executive session. Thank you.